It is now seven.
Have to have them wait eight, ten years.
Oh, one.
Somebody address it.
Planning board meeting to order. It is December 12th, 2019. I'll accept a motion on the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second?
Second. Yeah, I always forget one side of it. Okay, we have a discussion proposed zoning bylaw change for Bob Vogel. Is he here tonight?
Um, we sent him the agenda. Hello?
Do we know if he's coming?
I didn't remind him this afternoon, put it that way.
Okay.
I mean, I, he gave me new wording yesterday, which you have the new wording all in your, um, in the hard copies, and I sent you out the new wording, so...
Is that the red line that we have here?
Yes.
This is red line?
Yes. So I assumed he knew about it. I mean, he, he's been working towards it all week.
Yep.
So...
See over there?
We thought some other people.
Other people have shown up.
Throw him back, let's go look for Bob.
Yeah, seriously.
But do you want to do accounting or something else until it's all done?
Yes, please.
Do you come?
Mm-hmm. Go for it.
Oh, I don't have a, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I left, I forgot to give you the thing.
Go.
You have a lot of bills to pay.
We do.
There's no thing? You didn't type up the thing?
No. I will give it to you, I'm going to fill it right now.
All right.
So those are the minutes.
Two minutes.
Those are easy.
I don't have that.
Do that off the top of your head.
I go through the minutes from November 14th, 2019, and November 21st, 2019.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am only, I'm abstaining from the 14th.
Okay. Um, discussion vote, public benefit preserving historic buildings. Was Doug Smith coming in for this, or no? Their whole thing with that house is ridiculous.
What are we on? What's the issue here?
Um, public benefit, preserving historic buildings, structures, or resources. Have you seen the Curtis House?
No.
Well?
Then why?
It's not what it was, at all.
And this ties into the building's issue, pretty much, whether it's left.
Yes.
Preserve that house, but be sure that... Basically, there's nothing left of the Curtis House.
No, nothing.
I mean, they might have some...
Boards.
Boards here and there, but the whole second floor was taken off.
Hmm. Is there something on this?
Walls were changed on the first floor as well. So, this brought a discussion between, um, Doug Smith, Bob, myself, and Brad, and, um, Bob kind of maintained that the condition was ambiguous, so he didn't have a lot to enforce. So, therefore...
Our condition was ambiguous?
Our condition was...
What did our condition read?
Our condition read that prior to the issuance of the fifth occupancy permit, the applicant shall complete the relocation of the existing dwelling in accordance with the requirements of the Historic Commission with a historic plaque.
And did he do so?
No.
So, it doesn't sound ambiguous. It sounds like he failed to follow directions. Why, why is, why is the building inspector saying that's ambiguous?
Because we should have put in the special permit exactly what was meant on, you know, preserving the house, et cetera.
Was the Historical Commission contacted?
They were the ones that wanted it saved.
No, did, did the builder contact the Historical Commission?
Initially...
Did he have a set of requirements from the Historical Commission?
They wrote a letter to the planning board as part of the context, as part of the public hearing, and that, saying that the house was significant, and that Willby Builder had agreed to preserve and rehab the house. And so, they withdrew the demolition permit. So, there's, uh, what does preserve and rehab mean was vague in the building commissioner's mind, so...
No, it said it was up to the Historical Commission.
So therefore, we, so that this won't, won't happen again, we have to, Doug Smith, myself, and Brad, Bob said, we need to come up with some type of policy that needs to be adopted by the planning board, so that it won't happen again, because I indicated to, um, Mr. Doug Smith that planning board is not likely to ever go for historic preservation as a benefit again, based on having been...
Burned twice.
Burned twice.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm just trying to parse this out. So, one is a going-forward policy.
Right, and that's what we're talking about.
One is the current issue, right?
Right, the policy is the target.
It does not sound to me like the condition that we had was ambiguous, and, and it should be enforced.
Well, we're not going to talk about that tonight.
When are we going to talk about that?
I was thinking perhaps you want to talk about that when they come in for their next needed action item.
Uh, I don't want to talk about anything else when they come in, except that.
Yeah, so, so, right now, the policy has been developed, which, so that it won't happen again. The bar has been raised to putting it to the status of, um, basically, a national register of these properties.
And, and where is this policy?
I sent it out in your packets.
Oh, is that what this is? I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
It's the four, it's the four things, um, that, you know, that Doug wanted. And I, I think that the policy is worth adopting right now, and then if it needs to be modified in the future, you know, that usually, that at least you have a starting place right now for, for the four things that, you know, should be in this policy. So, the Historic Commission will be coming to the planning board meeting. It won't be just via a comment letter anymore. They will actually be coming and agreeing or disagreeing. If you find that there's a public benefit, then we have to raise the bar for that.
Um, discussion from the board, Bill?
No, I want to bring him in, but I know when I go to my second floor, I'll...
Okay. But what about, um, this? What about what?
The policy?
Yes. Are you willing to vote for that tonight?
What, um, yeah, I think we should discuss the policy, right?
Yes.
And we could, we could, as amended, sort of adopt it as an interim policy, right? And then, maybe put it to more a formal written policy of some kind, right? I'm just looking at the, it looks like it's sort of a three or four-step process we have here, proposed. And I'm wondering if, if a proponent is going to claim a public benefit to a historic building, that we, we don't even address that unless a, a evaluation has been done. This appears to be saying, well, Historical Commission will sit in on the meeting and sort of take a generic, make a generic decision whether it's a public benefit or not.
But that's in co, in collaboration with the planning board. I mean, they're going to, you know...
Yeah, but I don't have any data, is what I'm saying, is that somebody's going to sort of say that, and then I'm saying, well, um, if they're going to say that, then how do we validate that? Which, which you've said, okay, go, go to the next step, which is to do an evaluation.
I think that...
And I'm just saying, do the evaluation first, present it to us, if you're going to claim it as a public benefit.
I think that has to go through the Historical Commission, rather than through us. I think the Historical Commission has to prove that it is in the public's benefit to preserve a particular structure. And if so, why?
Well, right now, you have a listing...
Now, we're doing both things here, though. That's what's going on here.
Right now, you have a listing, um, on the mass cultural resources inventory system of houses and things that are already part, that are registered with the state. And so, that's the first place that the Historic Commission looks when something comes in. We, we look as well. And so, if it's, if it's on that, then somebody doing, per se, in flexible open space or special permit, might say, it's on this mass cultural system, therefore, it, it has significant value. And then they start coming in to historic and to say that maybe this would be a public benefit to save it. So, some study has already been done, if it's on this, um, if it's on this cultural register.
Okay, I buy that. What if it's not?
Rob, then you're, you're absolutely right. Study needs to be done.
Yep. All right, we don't have...
So it seems there's, there should be some background of data and analysis that puts this in the right sort of realm, if you will, right? Otherwise, if somebody just comes in and says, well, it's, it's an old house and we're calling it public benefit, there's nothing we're going to say about it, except do a study, right?
Right.
Um, so it seems like if somebody wants to claim that as a public benefit, then they have to do the research before they come into, they should file a research with us, so we could have a, um, informed discussion about it. As, because otherwise, we're just, we're not going to know anything about it.
Hmm. All right, this, what is this, the meeting? All right, um, we're going to continue this discussion. Could you put this on the agenda for another time, to really vet this out, and get Doug Smith in here to talk to us, please?
Yeah, I will have, I will look at that.
All right, thank you. All right, Karen, do you want to just finish the bills, and then we'll move on?
Oh. Wow. I moved to a current renovation of 675 Valley for our corporation for period view of 35 Big Wall, Conny Island. For $7,167 to 260, our associate, Social Services, and Bestwood. For $1,650 to Merrill Corporation for period view services for 16, 18, and 20 Main Road. For $2,925 to Merrill Corporation for period view services for 443-461, Chief Justice Pushy Highway. For $3,960 to Merrill Corporation for period view services for Benjamin Stowe Farm. For $3,015.85 to Wood Post Development LLC for return of the store blood assuring for 203 Old Country Way. For $125 to the Acus Company for the annual tire rotor maintenance contract.
Okay.
For $6,069.35 to Horace Witten for his services at Seaside Center. For $918 to Horace Witten for period view services at Seaside Center. For $1,600 to Horace Witten for period view of the Yon Fakai Lane in Stockbridge. For $261.72 to Gay House Media for legal ads of 255 Valley Road and 480 Country Way. For $1,600 to Horace Witten for period view services of 14 to 16 Old Country Way. For $50 to Merrill Corporation for period view services for 16, 18, and 20 Main Road. And for $825 to Merrill Corporation for period view inspections at 920 East Street.
Is there a second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we now have a public hearing, definitive subdivision plan, they've just left the building. 14 and 16 Old Country Way.
I never come to the meeting. I got a letter, I had to sign for a God, and I will come out, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, we have a public hearing on 14 and 16 Old Country Way.
Thank you. Uh, so Jeff Delisi, I'm here tonight with Paul Maravito. Paul filed the definitive plan with respect to this project. As a background for the board, as well as for the folks in the public who are interested in tonight's hearing, I just wanted to reiterate what this filing is about and why we're here. Essentially, this is what we call a zoning freeze, definitive plan zoning freeze application. The law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts enables any owner of land to come forward with this type of plan. If the plan is approved, if it does show a subdivision and it's approved, then it's good sensible land use planning, because at that juncture, a, a freeze is instituted from the date of the endorsement of the plan for a period of, I believe, seven years or eight years, I'm actually stating it even more. It's eight years. So, an eight-year zoning freeze from the date of endorsement. And so, that zoning freeze does not mean that, that any subsequently enacted zoning bylaw would not, uh, could not be instructed pursuant to that. It simply means that a landowner has the option of, of complying with any subsequently enacted zoning bylaw, as well as any zoning bylaw that's frozen, meaning zoning bylaw that was in place prior to last spring's town meeting. And so, uh, a few months ago, we had a preliminary subdivision plan that was submitted along with three other properties. We've come forward, we were asked by the board to try to do an analysis as to all four of those projects. This particular property has some history, and, uh, we have plans to file an application before this board for a project that, um, we've been working with, with Steve and some of the members of the community to kind of put forward a plan that, um, is sensible for development of this property. And so, we were planning, and actually, prior to last spring's town meeting, we had developed plans for, um, for, which are not before the board tonight, for a mixed-use concept under the village business overlay zoning. And so, with that in mind, I just wanted to reiterate to the board that the purpose for this definitive plan filing is, is, is to freeze zoning, which will allow us to utilize the zoning bylaw in place prior to last spring's town meeting, if we so choose. And that we, even though this plan shows a subdivision, I can tell you with 100% certainty that we have no intention of constructing the subdivision shown on that plan. This is a theoretical exercise that the law requires us to undergo, if we so choose. So, with that, and Paul can explain what the plan shows, and, uh, we'll take it from there.
Can you start with the existing condition right out there?
Uh, can you change the orientation of the easel, please? People in the audience can't see the plan. If you just tilt it a little bit more, so that the board and the audience can see it, that would be...
Can you see this?
Can you guys see it? Can you see it?
Yeah, can you see it?
The, uh, this inside is just over 29,000 square feet in size.
You're going to have to turn that a little, you're going to have to turn that a little more. Bill can't see it over there.
Turn it a little more?
Yeah, he can't see it.
Can you see it over there?
Let's let Bill see it. It has two existing dwellings, one in this location, and one in the east end. The rear portion of the yard is vacant, using a storage shed to the rear of the property. The rain is built over the flat, it's only about a few foot. I changed the elevation from the street to, to the rear property line. There's also a 10-foot strip of land that they have going out to, uh, this place, which is also public land. Uh, the, the vegetation out the front of the hang is predominantly lawn. The proposed subdivision, we should now ask them before, we have two buildable lots. What we show is a, um, a half a cul-de-sac, providing a rental furniture to the two people family house lots, which could be built. We show a driveway going to the house on Lot 1, coming off the cul-de-sac, and another driveway going to Lot 2 of the cul-de-sac. These driveways are a nice little way out the old country way. There's an existing soaring grain line on the street, which discharges into an open brick on the other side of full country way as well. The proposed grading on this lot is probably less than a foot change, most of it growing up around the existing homes, to make sure the land slopes away from the old 20%. The slope up to the, uh, street, there is a one-foot gap, giving, uh, thirty pages to the driveways. There's some loop infiltrators to the, uh, the loop areas as well. So, I think with that, I'll end my presentation, answer any questions. You may have, there's also a list, as you point out, we did submit a, um, a list of waivers that figure 1213, which were identified to be, must have been a lot. With that, with that, yeah, the answer is...
All right. Mr. Delisi, question for you. We have sat down with Mr. Proctor. He has come up with a plan that really makes a tremendous amount of sense. So, I'm wondering, legality not aside, why don't I have the sense, and maybe I'm incorrect here, that this is a colossal waste of time?
It's not a colossal waste of time, because the project that Mr. Proctor has come up with, which makes a lot of sense, was designed under a zoning bylaw that no longer applies to this property unless that zoning bylaw is frozen.
Fine. Karen?
So, if, under the zoning bylaw, it would be under the old village business overlay district and the business district, because now that area is now in the V C N district. And that's why you have, you, that's why you received the preliminary plan, and that's why you're receiving within seven months, follow-up, the definitive plan, which has to be approved and endorsed in order for the eight-year zoning freeze to occur. And as Mr. Delisi said, it's a mechanism in Massachusetts state law that allows for zoning freezes, um, for some divisions. And so, um, we basically asked for the plan to be engineering pair reviewed, and we asked our consultant, who will speak in a minute, you know, could this plan be built as it is presented to the board with conditions and waivers? And so, that's what Janet from Worsley Witten will bring forth.
Okay. Then, turn it over to...
Before we do that, could I ask what the difference is between the old zoning requirements and the new? Are there material differences here?
I have not looked at the site.
Well, I'm, I guess I'm asking the proponent.
Well, there are probably about 70 pages of zoning bylaws that were newly enacted, that have applied to this property now, that did not apply to the property previously. There are, just as, in a general sense, there are use protect, there are additional uses that could be introduced to the property. There's higher density as of right that could be utilized on this property that...
With the new, with the new zoning?
With the new zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, actually allows higher density.
Yeah.
Both as of right and upon the issuance of a special permit.
Uh-huh.
Therefore, it allows setbacks to be reduced. Um, and so, those are, those are a few kind of the highlights.
Those are, those are bad things?
They're not bad things.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that the new, the new bylaw is bad at all. This is a project that was conceived prior to the adoption of that...
This project?
No, not this project. And I'm sorry to...
This is the only project you're asking for approval on right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, let me back up. About two years ago, um, this property owner was before the zoning board of appeals, um, for a special permit to allow a particular, very specific project on the property, that both the zoning board and the planning board have conferred jurisdiction over. The zoning board had jurisdiction over it from the standpoint of, what are resources, protection, overlay, zoning district, and the uses, and the setbacks. And the planning board would have jurisdiction over it from the site plan perspective, and potentially also, um, certain requirements under the village business overlay. We got as far as the zoning board, and we received a special permit from the zoning board, and it was a, it was a bit of an arduous process, meaning that multiple members of the community were in attendance, and really expressed their displeasure with what we had conceived at the time. And so, Mr. Proctor, who's the owner of the property, is a, um, lifelong citizen, a constituent, and heard those concerns. And rather than bringing it to the next step, which would have been before this board for a site plan review, potentially also a special permit, though I can't recall, rather than coming to this board as a second step, we went back to the drawing board, and we spent considerable amount of engineering and design, we spent some time with some neighbors. We had an informal, a couple of informal meetings with both Karen and Ian, and we came up with a concept that we think, um, is, is a responsible, reasonable concept, that we believe that, that some of the closest abutters would be appreciative of. And once we got, kind of, a consensus of support, we decided that we would proceed under that concept, which would have required us to go back before zoning, and come back here, and then go to the, to the conservation commission, uh, and, and the board of health, I believe. Maybe I'm wrong about that, Paul, it's Stewart, actually. So, as we were about to do that, the town changed the zoning on us. And so, we were aware that the zoning change was coming, and so, rather than, um, uh, so, so we, we immediately got together a preliminary subdivision definitive, preliminary zoning freeze plan, which was put before this board, and kicked off the process of a zoning freeze. I believe that if we want to, um, to develop our property in accordance with that later, more reasonable concept, that we absolutely need to get a zoning freeze, so that we can utilize those provisions that we designed the property for. So that's kind of a long-winded explanation, Steve, but I don't mean to say, or denigrate, or say that the zoning bylaw presently is something that is not good. I mean, it, it potentially allows the developer, potentially, under cer, certain circumstances, perhaps to have a higher density on the property and, and closer buildings.
But it precludes, the current new zoning precludes whatever this new design is?
Um, I don't know if it absolutely precludes it, but I know absolutely that the other zoning allowed it.
All right. Janet?
Say for, um, the record, my name is Janet Bernardo, I'm a professional civil engineer for Forest and River Group. We were asked to conduct a peer review... We were asked to conduct a peer review of this subdivision. So you have a letter in front of you dated December 2nd, 2019. And what we did was we went through your subdivision regulations and the zoning and kind of step by step listed out the various requirements that were applicable to this project and determined if they complied with it or they didn't. There is a number of waivers that were requested, so we kind of listed waivers. Many of them, we, as professionals, did not object to, but some of them we deferred to the board, such as require a landscape plan. We didn't feel like it was in our place to just say, yeah, no landscape plan needed. However, when the request was for a profile of the road, we felt like that was a technical piece that we could say we had no objection to a profile of the 50-foot cul-de-sac that was flat. So that's basically what you have in front of you. There was a number of pieces, such as there's a waiver request for an erosion control plan. We think though it's flat, and there was no, there was a proposed construction, it was difficult to totally understand what was going to happen with the drainage. But we think there could be a condition about the type of erosion controls that may be necessary. And observation pit for the infiltration chambers for the roof runoff. They have asked for a waiver on that. I think it's too defined to condition basically that an observation pit for the infiltration chamber gets done prior to construction or prior to a building permit. So the only, the only kind of thing there weren't, need to kind of work it out from our point of view, was the building setbacks. There's a 20-foot setback on the rear property line, and one of the houses is in that rear setback. So that would be something that would be in condition to make sure that the hanging posts that was put there would be placed outside, outside of that setback. And the applicant is proposing permeable payers to deal with the driveway runoff, which typically we would very much favorably of, however, this property is in a Zone A, and as a Zone A, you need to have free treatment prior to the infiltration, and therefore the permeable payers are not appropriate stormwater management technique within a Zone A. Yeah, there's a few things, like there's an existing 24-inch RCB pipe there much of this site. There's an easement for that. There is no easement obviously shown on the plan, whether it exists or not. So there was some mislaid in these things that we weren't sure of. Any of this is land courted. So we kind of went step by step. That was, that's why this is kind of a lengthy letter in our front. It also includes each of the, you know, basically listed the various subdivision regulations, and then includes what are responsible. So I know that in general, with the conditions and the waivers, it does appear to be something that could be built if the applicant chose to build these particular houses with this particular half of a cul-de-sac road. So that was, our task was to make sure that this could pass as a subdivision. If so, results. But there are a lot of other conditions that go on.
Karen?
So based on that, I wrote a draft decision for the board to consider that because it potentially could be constructed as shown, I required a number of the items, they were either waived, or there's never items that need to be shown back to the board, and a requirement for a final revised plan set was included, so that all the items that were peer reviewed and said they needed the information on would be put in a final revised plan set if the subdivision were going to be built in the next few years.
Okay. I'll open it up to the board for discussion. Stephen, you've been taking copious notes.
Well, I guess the only thing we can look at is what they're proposing. And so I have, I have some questions on this, this cul-de-sac, and maybe you've looked at it also, Janet, but they created this sort of half cul-de-sac off the road. How is, how is the stormwater managed on that?
One of our conditions, that they were not showing how the stormwater was managed off that cul-de-sac. So how that runoff is being directed, because there's no hedge spaces or storm drains shown.
Right. And that wouldn't be the town's responsibility to manage that runoff? That would be their responsibility, right?
Yeah. It's their responsibility to manage it in the beginning, and then if it's an accepted road, then the town will take ownership of the road if it becomes an accepted subdivision road.
Right. But at this point, there's no, there's nothing on here that tells us how that would happen?
Right. There's nothing on the road.
Well, I don't find that very compelling as a, as a constructible facility.
Right. Well, it's a very flat driveway, flat cul-de-sac, so it's something that could be directed to a swale or some other kind of-
That could be integrated into this design?
And the applicant has reduced their existing condition plan that they showed, kind of did only outline the two houses, is a considerable amount of concrete or asphalt on that property right now. So they have reduced the impervious payment by two, over 2,000 square feet with this runoff. So that alone has improved the stormwater.
The, so how do you deal with the permeable drives? Those are now impervious, right?
Yes, they'll have to make those impervious.
Does that change the calculation?
Yeah, I wanted to verify that. Does the permeable payers include those in your impervious calculation? Or were those considered?
We didn't do, one of the waivers was to not do the drainage calculations.
But you said your amount of impervious area.
Right. Will we consider the existing impervious area versus the proposed, with about a 20.6% reduction?
And the driveways considered impervious or pervious?
Pervious.
They were considered pervious.
So if you take those back out, where are we?
In the proposed condition.
Proposed conditions, you made impervious.
Yes.
So that, then, so now you factor increasing. It was like two, over 2,000 square feet, so the driveways are probably two. So there is, it's close to impervious, but they are also infiltrating the roof runoff, which is not happening in those situations. And they've taken that off the table and reduced.
But they haven't done any stormwater calculations here.
Rebecca? I don't have a question at this moment. Ben?
No, not right now.
Bill?
Can I build it without any waivers?
Probably not.
What do I do?
Well, you can build it without, well, I mean, it would just be, waivers are for erosion controls of that, that you could, you could just require the erosion control. You could require landscape plan. You could require the index sheet. You could require the profile. You could require easements. What were you going to include? Stormwater, you could require the stormwater to be managed. So we are looking at the index sheet. Home loan association plan, you require those waivers, you could require that. So they, they could, you could require them to provide all of the information in the observation pits. There are some of those things that I would recommend you require anyway, so the erosion controls and the object pits. So they could go back and do all of the things that they've asked for waivers for. It was just a manual work under. So yes, I guess my answer is that they could go, they would just have to spend more time doing it.
Can you know that without doing the observation pits?
No, they need to do the observation. That should definitely be a condition, that they should have to do the observation pits. However, it is something that other towns and other boards have allowed applicants to do, because there's multiple ways to put stormwater management in for roof runoff, whether those chambers or subsurface chambers are deep under the ground, whether they're relatively shallow and spread out, whether there are rain gardens and that's really on the surface. They just need to have some separation from groundwater. So there's multiple alternative means of meeting that. It did not appear that this site was, what was on the site, there's the stream across the street, but it's not like this was not looked at as a wet site, that groundwater was on the surface. So there's usually a way to make the infiltration from the roof runoff happen.
And so again, the draft decision was written that basically you're not really granting, you're granting the waiver now, but it needs to be included in the final revised plan set should the subdivision be built. That's how most of the waivers were written.
Well, this thing has to basically be redesigned in order for it to be buildable.
Yes. Particular-
It's not really buildable right now.
Right. They could, right, but they could add rain gardens or regitated swales to capture the driveway runoff, and that would, you know.
Ben?
There's nothing to be, excuse me, there's nothing to be clue them from asking for a waiver if it was filed.
I'm sorry?
If they actually filed it. This, this plan right here.
Yeah.
It will have all the waivers.
They actually, well, they already did. Right. I mean, if they were to be like, okay, we're going to build this next month, this is our plan, and so you have now conditioned them to require specific things, including many of the things that they've asked for waivers on. Did you even ask for a landscape plan?
So-
I think so. Maybe you waived the index sheet because that's easy.
So though, all those like, street trees. I, you know, they asked not to have street trees, and they asked that it be issued prior to the first billing permit. The draft motion that I put for you to waive the requirement for street trees now, it required them to be shown on the final revised plan set should the subdivision be built. And they have to submit the final revised plan set in order to move anywhere beyond this preliminary plan, this definitive plan, except for endorsement. So that's the approach that I took with all the waivers. And one waiver, I said, no, you're not getting this waiver. I mean, you need to show sidewalks when you come in with your final revised plan set.
I guess I've all said.
No? All right, this is a public hearing. I'll open it up to the public.
Yes, I have a question. I'm Stephen Markell, I'm a fellow project. Mr. DeLisi, I wanted to know on, I'm sure you already spoke about it, but the runoff on the houses, if that's my idea. Something about that.
The roofs on the plan, we showed infiltrators to capture the runoff from the roof. Water that would hit the grass, it'd be, recharge it back in the grass. And the driveways are still fed out to the street, 1%. And they were consistent impervious favors, so the water would seep into the ground and flow down to the street. And the rest of the area would be won and not escape, and we'd typically see where the, see where the rain would come.
We should point out, that's, that's a-
The whole design would reduce the amount of impervious surface by over 20%.
Well, that's, that's not quite right, because we've just figured out that you have to re-include the driveways in as impervious surface. The second point is that it's not, I mean, although you've shown a box on a piece of paper that says this is an infiltrator, you don't have any observation pits or groundwater level identified. You may not be able to do that. So this is a cartoon at some level.
Not, for this project, actually not. The reason I say that is, as Jeff mentioned earlier, we've been in front of the zoning board twice, and to do that site design-
Do you have observation pit results?
We've already done the stormwater analysis and-
Is it here?
We included an analysis of the soils out there.
Is it here?
Pardon?
Is it here on this set of drawings?
No.
Okay. Then it's a cartoon.
For the waiver, for the reason stated.
That's, I, you know, you don't have it here, so it's not here. Right?
I mean, the answer is, of course, I want to tell you that we know that-
If you knew that, then you could have put it here.
If it were the design, the way we were designing, it would have-
A sham.
I am not happy camper with this, Mr. DeLisi. I really am not. I understand what you're trying to do, and we have, it'll take the next 15 minutes just to read this. So we have a draft motion. Karen, is there anything else you want to say?
No, but maybe if you want, you might want to start in the, maybe the reverse order. Maybe you might want to start with the waivers, like you do on most every other subdivision first, and then go back to the finding, and then go back to the findings, and then go back to the conditions, which are in here. But, I mean, this was, this was written as, since it only meant to freeze the zoning, that it's, as Steve kind of says, it's an, it's an exercise. And so if you decide that you want more information on this set of plans, then I guess you'll have to ask for the more information on the plans.
Okay. I mean- All right, the waivers.
Start on page nine.
Yep, let's start on page nine.
Waivers, the board voted to approve the following waivers, 1 through 12, from the 26th and 73rd regulations on December 12, 2019. Section 6.7.2.2.
Oh, 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 what did you say? The board voted?
That's a mistake, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I tried to make it in the motion, and I missed one.
Oh, okay.
Index sheet showing the entire subdivision at a scale of 1 to 100, 1 inch, 100 feet. Waiver request, submit prior to endorsement, so as to approve any modifications arrived yet during the review process. Applicant's justification, submit prior to endorsement, as to approve any modifications arrived yet during the review process. Discussion?
I'm sorry, which one are, which waiver are we talking about?
Page nine. Now we're on page 10.
The 100 scale index sheet?
Yeah, yep.
There has got to be an easier way to do this.
Ian, if you would like to consider an easier way of doing it, I mean, Karen, if you want to put our heads together, we more than happy to simply request a continuance now, so as not to waste the board's time.
Please.
But one of the reasons why Janet is here tonight was because we were trying, we were making an effort to try to demonstrate to the board that this is satisfied, passes the straight face test for your review consultant. That would allow you basically to go ahead and say, okay. Most of the waivers are developed as a completely- built as a conventional school, but, you know, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with, with the board being uncomfortable where we're at at the moment. So, I don't want to make the board more uncomfortable. It's just that, from my perspective, as I sit here, a lot of, even though this plan might appear to the board is not having a lot of work put into it, a lot of work was put into the concept that is not presently before this board, that's why it's a little frustrating. And, and, but if, if this were, if the zoning freeze were to somehow at some juncture not occur, what, what the net effect of it, from what I see, is if we went back to the drawing board, we would design a project that would be compliant and try to maximize the density and everything that we possibly could out of the existing bylaw as of right, because that's what the town theoretically wants to see. You know, a bustling, higher-density, mixed-use project that's closer to the road. And we have spent a lot of time with the neighbors trying to avoid exactly that, because in this community, that's not what they express they want to see.
I understand that, Jeff, I really do.
So...
I understand. I just wish that there were an easier, more expedient way to do this. This just seems...
All right, the reason why it was done like this is, is this is what you do for every definitive subdivision. And so, you have, you have...
Yeah, but for every definitive subdivision, we don't ever accept something this...
All right, so...
This thin, right?
Does the board want to see more? If, if you think you need to see more to prove to you that it's buildable, then you need to ask for that tonight. Most of those items that I went through Janet's letter are in Condition 19. I went exactly through the letter and said, you know, um, you know, proposed contours. Janet said proposed contours shall be provided to illustrate the drainage flow paths. All grading for the proposed development should be shown. I was thinking that could be on a final plan set, but if you think some of this needs to be provided now, all these things in Condition 19 are taken directly from, from the peer review letter.
Well, I think certainly the pervious pavement thing ought to be addressed. I think the correct calculation of impervious versus pervious surface ought to be addressed. Somehow we ought to address, it just doesn't feel like there's any real discussion about how we manage stormwater here. And so, we're leaving, we're leaving, you know, 70% of the work for some time later on, is what it feels like. And I guess, no, you know, there's, there's a lot of issues here, Janet, that you raised, and, you know, things like the 1 to 100 scale, we could probably live with that, right? That probably is not going to affect the buildability here, but things like these pervious surfaces, stormwater, you know, there's a lot of issues that just haven't been addressed here. And I don't know how they get addressed under a condition. If they came in and said, okay, we're going to build this thing, then what do we get and what kind of review and, and approval process do we get over this?
Jeff, give them you full review.
We get full review, but under what context? We've already approved...
Of the peer review engineer with review and all again.
Right. So...
That's what I'm...
Which could constitute a complete redesign of this, this particular layout.
All right, so, from what you're saying, you seem to want the sizing calculations for the infiltrators, you seem to want the pervious pavement thing, and...
Well, I heard, I heard them say they had information on stormwater, so why isn't it on here, right?
The project I talked about was the one we submitted to the zoning board, which was far more intense than this.
But you have, you have groundwater levels, you have all that kind of stuff, so it seems like you, you should be able to address that.
In order to use that information, this project, we have to do a complete drainage analysis for this project only. It's, you know, tappled and orange is between the two. The other project was obviously more against it, had more...
I don't, I don't know anything about the other projects, so I'm not, I'm not talking about that.
You haven't seen that?
No.
All right.
But as part of that other project, did you do observation pits? Do you have that data?
Yeah.
So, is that something that could easily be supplied? You could easily do a sizing calculation for the infiltrators. You could easily do something with the, with the permeable pavement and 40% TSS removal. Those are, those are things that are relatively easy to produce, that would appear to give the board a little bit more confidence that this could be built as designed.
Therefore, I will request a continuance, so that you all can get your calculations together. Please.
I'm happy to give you that continuance.
Well, the expectation is, it's going to be continued. You're going to look at all of the waivers and see what you can, what information you can provide now?
Is that acceptable, Paul, or? I mean, what we were trying to avoid was a cost of having to do something that, you know, when we typically present these stormwater calculations, Bill, the books are like 150 pages that we count.
Suffered through.
Yeah, you know, and so what we thought that we were doing was, was providing enough information so that your engineer could feel comfortable that we could do this, and, and if you want more...
Do you, do you have, do you have the soils information and stuff?
I do not have, I mean, unfortunately, in my opinion, if they have soil test bits, which I do not know that that existed, to show the infiltration and to show up the roof runoff, it's a very simple calculation. To be able to prove that they don't, they have separation groundwater, that we have test bits, that is very simple. And to come up with a way to manage the driveway runoff and a rain garden, I think it's also a very simple calculation and does not need a whole heap of...
Mm-hmm.
I think you can simplify that, because it is just two houses with two driveways. So, I don't think it's an expensive price.
Right.
And if that's what you're requesting, that's, that's what we get.
All right, that was your question.
Okay, so, I'll go back to the approach. Once we've got that, what we've always done in the past is a destroying of the plan, that we go back up and we've operated from the waivers forward. We come back up and we're based on the information we've got. This is whether it's a feasible, reasonable way for us to grant that waiver.
Correct.
Yeah, they're building a house up here, and what we've got is air right now that we're putting down as a foundation. And if part of that air that's available is what you've got from your observation pits and your soil tests, then I don't think that's unreasonable to put that into this piece of document.
So, what you're asking us to do is to do the drainage analysis and size those roof infiltrators in the driveways, and basically, we're, and we're doing drain counts.
If you've got the soil data and stuff, I, I don't know why you didn't include it here, but you should, right? You've got to modify the, the pervious pavement stuff anyway, right?
We can do that work, it's just that, it's a time and cost for something that would be built.
Well, the other thing you could do is sign an affidavit that you'll never build this thing.
Happy to do it.
Right? From, from the, from the property owner.
I would, I would let the...
That would follow the deed.
Excuse me, Steve.
I'm sorry.
I'm just saying.
Jeff?
One, one thing that we did in another town with the zoning freeze application and this type is, the planning board conditioned the approval on, once the property is reported, you have to come back to the plan, that, da-da-da-da-da, everything. And then what happened was, is, is they signed the Mylar, and we agreed that the Mylar would not be released to me for recording until after six months. The reason why that mattered is, under state law, after six months, the, the decision becomes void if not recorded. And the whole concept was, is we were fine with that, because we didn't want to build it. The town felt comfortable that it wasn't going to be built. It was the assurance, because they were the gatekeeper, the Mylar. We got the endorsement, which gave us the freeze, and even though it was never recorded and became void, case law says that we still have the benefit of the freeze. So, everybody was happy and we moved on, we dealt with it very simply and easily. And so, if you're looking for something like that, if that's your concern, we are happy. I can get you an affidavit from the owner. We can do it that way, because this is not something that we want to build.
Right, I understand that.
This is not something that you would see here.
Which is why, no.
But it has to pass the test, in our minds, that it could be built.
I understand that.
Right? And so, I'm trying to remove, and I think Bill's on the right path here, remove as many of these waiver conditions as is possible in balancing it. We're not asking you to do everything, but we're asking to look at these waivers and say, what are the things we can address? And we already have some things we know we can address. And it seems to me, you know, if you can reduce that number and make it much more probable that this thing could be built as designed, not as redesigned after you submit everything, you know, all, all 60 waiver responses, you know, six months or a year, whatever from now.
I, I don't want to...
We're trying to get to that spot where we're comfortable that it's a buildable subdivision.
It's a matter of wasting some of the time. It's a matter of having informations available that could be added to this to make it a better package.
You have it.
Agreed. It's about the sense of surety that it could be built.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Now, if you can come back and do that without doing a full four tons of paper, whatever your, your description was, right, that would make sense. As an engineer, I'm, this is, in this condition, this is what I expect to find, and if I find it, then this is what we can do. That's an engineering idea, Paul.
Yes.
So, I would encourage you to go back and look at all the waivers and say, you know, for sort of a minimal next level of effort, right, how many of these waivers can we take off the list? Right? And sort of boil it down.
Yeah, I have a good question. Where we're going to go back and do some drain counts, would the board consider the waivers to not have to pay, is that called a sap? The reason is, is the driveways want to come to here, especially go up to the whole countrywide, the same with this one here. Reason we don't have a common driveway is because you can't have one on a whole sap. If we're going to do the drain counts, does it make sense not to have this pavement in here at all, so, so it looks more like a residential area? We didn't ask for that waiver, because that sometimes required the pavement?
No, 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 let's not get you carried away. Let's go have a continuance, and we'll figure it out, okay?
Yes.
Karen?
So, the board needs to figure out when you want the continuance to. I don't think they'll be ready for next week. So, we, January 9th, you have one public hearing, you have design review committee interviews, and you're having a zoning workshop. January 23rd, you have three public hearings already, which will last until at least 9:30. February 13th, you have a zoning public hearing. So, there would be time on that night.
That's out, okay?
February.
February 13th.
Then when we do this, I would assume you got, you got to send it out to Janet for review?
Yes, yeah, we will. We'll send it out for review again.
We'll need the time, if we have vacation somewhere.
All right.
So, 13th is okay?
February 13th?
Yeah.
With the time to file?
So, with, and to file to March 27th. So, do you want to put your zoning public hearings first? Or, okay, so why don't we say 8 o'clock?
Perfect, thank you.
What's the zoning public hearing? What's the zoning public hearing? For zoning articles? Is that what that is? Oh, okay.
All right, you have a motion to continue to this...
So, move.
No, we didn't make a motion.
All right.
Oh, I thought you already made it.
13th of February at 8 o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You'll sign the necessary paperwork, and you're still here?
We're still here, we can stream my, well, you just call it and we'll do something similar, but I just might want to have a little quick discussion.
Okay. You are here now for One Buckeye Lane, and I looked at the plans, and, I mean, I can understand that one, far better than I could understand what I was looking at with Citro Concrete Pipe.
Yeah, so, if, if we're open, if the hearing's open?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, essentially, One Buckeye Lane is the site of Citro Concrete Pipe.
We can actually open the hearing.
All right, so you, you just said, we're into the new public hearing.
Into the new public hearing, which was scheduled at 7:45, we're running a little late, but that's okay. It's the definitive subdivision plan, One Buckeye Lane, and number 261, 253, 251, and 225, Struck Bridge Road.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. When we started this adventure prior to the last spring meeting and filing various preliminary plans, we identified this being significant to our clients, particularly on, this property is the current site of Citro Concrete Pipe business, okay? It's an industrial use in, but is now a commercial, but formerly probably when it started was just a residential zone. At the time of the preliminary applications, I recall, Steve specifically, that the entire board wanted us to go back and analyze the new bylaw with respect to these various properties to try to understand if it's really something that we, you know, we want, because the presumed, the presumed concept here is that the board would like to see a project under, under the bylaw, which it, which it spent so much time and effort enacting in the last spring meeting. And so, those four projects, we just talked about one of them, which we, we had definitely decided that it, we had a concept and we were going to move forward, we had already spoken with neighbors. The, one of the other properties was, was the Reynolds Package Store property, which, which, upon our review of your bylaw, we decided that we would not request the zoning A third property was off of Pecal Terrace, and frankly, we're right on the line, there's a possibility that the analysis is that new bylaw works. But, this is the fourth property, and it was very confounding to me as a zoning lawyer reviewing this bylaw, because I actually think that, of all, there are various sub-districts within this district, and this is basically one property that's in just this one sub-district. And I think that that property, when you look at the table of uses in the zoning bylaw, actually lends itself to very different types of uses than what we're used to seeing out here, meaning potentially, for instance, a hotel. And so, but the site is complicated in its present form. There's a lot of issues with respect to its industrial use, and I simply am not in a position, and the client has not even conceived of a concept, and doesn't even know whether or not he ever is going to seek a permit to develop that property, because the only way that he could do that is if he were to move his business out of the town of Citro Heat. And it's not easy in this day and age on the South Shore, finding an industrial site that can take that type of business. And so, we're in a position with respect to this zoning freeze application, that in good faith, I went back and I looked, but I can't report to the board that I feel comfortable that the new zoning bylaw is something that would be feasible or desirable in the future for whatever particular goal that the owner would want, which he hasn't even decided upon yet. And so that's why we're seeking the zoning freeze on this property. Contrary to what we just discussed, on this property here, this concrete pipe property, we don't have any test pit data. We don't have, we didn't do any significant work because we don't have any concept. Another reason why we have it for the Old Country Way property is because we do have a concept and we needed to do that calculation under a different aspect of the zoning bylaw. So, and with that as a preface, I'm not sure how much data we would be able to provide to the board to, that's similar to what we just discussed for Old Country Way. And this could be one of those situations where, in the interest of the town, it might make sense to freeze. If the property could be developed pursuant to the new bylaw, I'm sure that the owner would be doing that. But we just simply are literally in a black hole at the moment. And that's why we've requested this as belt and suspenders. And so I'm happy to request a continuance. We can have some continued conversations with Karen about this issue and concept and come back to the board and report any results that we have in that regard.
Okay.
But I want it to be upfront and very direct with you that this is, I see, I viewed concrete pipe very different than the last application.
And this freeze that you're talking about is all of these lots, right?
It's all of the lots.
The entire parcel?
Yeah.
Including the existing manufacturing lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, you know, I just don't know enough about the site, you know, the concrete use and.
Well, it's the last industrial area that we have in this town.
Yeah.
It's, and there was a lot of, people were a little bit upset when the tea came in and took away a lot of the industrial ability.
Right, but, you know, you guys just approved this true property and it makes all the sense in the world, but now we have even more, you know, now we have an industrial area kind of wedged in between a traditional residential area and then a new development makes use. I think that the impetus is moving that it makes sense to go in that direction, and your bylaw is created to allow exactly that.
Right, yes.
And we recognize that. But I just, it's just not there yet. I can't.
Alright, then why don't we put this on again for the 13th?
Can I add a couple of comments before you continue up? For this particular site, it was actually a little complicated when I first started looking at it, but it actually was much easier than the other property. Partly the existing, there's an existing stormwater feature kind of happening already in this parcel that's taking up all this ground, and so they were tying into this existing stormwater already. And the only additional building is that they're just putting this one single family house in that would recharge its stormwater in a chamber of some sort, so requiring an observation pit that'll lead it deep when that house is built is in such a big ask. And this is a small driveway, it's not extensive, where they already, this piece there is already being managed. So from a stormwater point of view, this one is already managing most of this stormwater, and it's not changing. So just to make it go. And it's not a zoning, and it's not a zoning thing, step with us.
Alright, so theoretically then, we could approve this definitive plan?
There is still a number of waivers because of things like the index sheet, the landscape plan, the profile of the subdivision road that is only 100 feet long. So they're still asking for most of the same waivers, so if that is something that you're not comfortable with, then they should go back. And it is definitely, I think the one thing that we think that they should show is the erosion controls. But besides that, they even, I think, have some proposed spark rates on the plan, maybe they have some proposed rates. This one actually had a lot more. The other one, the last one, is a little bit more than okay, and so.
We'll still ask for a continuance.
Then we can try to work on a format that's a little bit more precise, but we tried to, I followed most of the conditions taken from that other town's approval, but let's.
Let's work on this.
Yeah. You got it. Same day, same time?
About 8:30.
8:30.
On February 13th.
Move to continue this definitive subdivision plan for One Buckeye Lane to February 13th, 2020, at 8:30. Is there a second?
Do you want me to give you a half hour?
I gave, I gave a half, I gave 16 and a half hour. I did this, and I'll give this a half hour. Do you want me to give one?
I don't know whether, I think it's going to take all the time, it's just reading the work.
I know.
I still don't believe that you guys need to do that, but.
Well, we'll talk about that. We'll talk about that.
Maybe this is a good instance to have.
Yes, a meeting of the minds. Alright, we have continued, and also, we also have a public hearing.
Do we vote on this?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
He interrupted me.
Very appreciated.
Thank you. We now have a public hearing, definitive subdivision plan for Seven McDonald Terrace, which is going to be automatically continued.
So you have a motion for that one.
Which one's, oh, McDonald Terrace? That's Buckeye.
I'm moved to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan in Central Massachusetts, showing a division of Placels 53-5-19 and 53-5-28 located at Seven McDonald Terrace until 16 days from today, December 12, 2019. For the applicant to provide engineering period group funds in proof that all taxes are current and up to date, the public hearing will be continued until March 12, 2020 at 7:00 PM, thus allowing you to complete the engineering period group's review with rights by action provided with the town court until April 1, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now.
Bob?
Yes.
That's my guess. That's my guess. No, 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 no. You were up at 7 o'clock.
Oh, I know that.
So unfortunately, you're going to have to wait.
Okay, no, that's fine. I don't mind.
Alright, okay.
I'd like to apologize, obviously, you know, it's a full moon, it's climbing to 13 below, and about 6:30, a water pipe burst in my basement.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
So I did find the shut-off finally. Here I am.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a discussion, surety reduction on deer common. Karen?
I believe Mark and Sheri's here for the applicant. I think we should tell you what you want to do.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Would you identify yourself, please, for the.
Mark and Sheri from Sheri Brothers. We have the deer common bond reduction.
Okay. Tell us what you want.
Well, we put in for a bond reduction through the planning board and Karen and the engineer that, record. And we asked for a, to reduce it and leave about $15,000 on the bond. And then Peter Bell Mary from Merrill sent back a letter that increased that 15 to about $27,000 or so. We're happy with that now. He had sent in a letter to Karen.
Yeah, you've got it. Karen?
Alright, so unfortunately, not all the work is done out there, and so they've asked for bond reduction. They have drainage improvements at the corner of Block 12 that need to be completed. They have a handicap ramp with a rumble strip, have to file all the asphalt, the legal fees, and then what they wanted to ask about is the area behind the detention basin. On top of the berm, there was a number of plantings, and the plantings, they planted them once, they were eaten by the deer, they planted them twice, they were eaten by the deer. And so how much, and would you be willing to accept a substitution of variety of a more deer resistant plant? I don't think you're going to get, basically, they spec Arberite, and Arberite is not going to work in this particular case. Possible Bayberry is much more deer resistant and would provide some screening. And I guess I would recommend to the board that based on another project that you've just stubbly farmed, where some of the plants have been in for four or five years, they're coming, they're getting ready for street acceptance too, they didn't make it, all the plants, but the owner, the developer asked for, could he do a certain number of a different plant? And you said yes. I would recommend that same thing be the case here.
How does it affect the?
I'm sorry.
I was just asking Karen a question here. So when you say Bayberry has some screening, how much different is it, I don't know what a Bayberry looks like, so, how much different is it from an Arberite?
Arberite's more tall and thin. A Bayberry is shorter and fatter. So.
But still an evergreen?
It's still an evergreen.
Yeah, shoot. When we went to plant the shrubbery in the beginning, the landscape people said, no, those are not the ones that you should put in there because they're going to be, there are certain type of Arberite. And then we requested from the board a change, which we did get from you, and we put in the Green Giant that are supposedly deer resistant. Now, they are scattered throughout the site. There are some at the entrance that have thrived because the deer don't get at them. There are some behind, some of the houses have done better than others, and the ones that are really out in the woods areas on the other side of the detention, that are up on the flat areas that we have to cut every year, they live, they come up about three feet and they're okay, and from three, five to six feet, they're bare, and then from six to eight feet, they're growing again. So what's happening is, you know, those are the ones we recommended, those are the ones who ran by you for a change, and they're recommended by the landscaper, but they still didn't eat them. So the deer further out, yes, they're getting at them if they're hungry enough, they'll eat them, the ones that are closer to civilization. Some of them are thriving, so we did change it out in the beginning to something that we thought would work.
So I think you're going to have to change it out again, unfortunately.
True, well, that's the.
You would recommend.
What do you recommend?
The issue, because we think that pretty much anything that up there probably did eat. And it's not that we can't change them out, some maybe need to be changed out, if that's what you want, others I think will thrive. So I'm not sure how many, he mentioned 32, but I don't think all 32.
I would recommend that you allow us the flexibility to work with the developer to figure out which ones need to be replaced with a different variety of plant that is more deer resistant. Green Giant is supposedly air deer resistant, like the ones at the front of the site are beautiful, but the ones at the back are not. Bayberry is more deer resistant, but I recommend that we keep extra surety so we can make sure that we can have the appropriate amount of money to finagle this, because the intent is that they would like to be coming for street acceptance in the near future. Things are not ready right now, the project is not complete, you're still holding surety, our engineer has not certified that this is complete. I think that you need to hold enough money so that we can put something out there in a mutual agreement.
Right, okay.
That will work for the developer, the homeowners association, and the town. Because when the town, even though the developer maintains this, and the homeowners association maintains this, a certain plan was approved by the planning board. And so I'm just asking that, my recommendation is that we reduce the surety to $27,560.
Okay.
$560? Wow, that's very specific.
Which is in accordance with your peer review engineer's comments, because he took the NAST DOT numbers, and so that's how he came up with those numbers.
Shoot.
Yes.
Can I just respond to, on the list, you do have that list of things that are undone, but since this letter went out, we have done the drainage. The handicap ramp, SFT's going to be doing that. We have painted the five eyedress. Karen, I'll be delivering you signed plans tomorrow, on Monday, for the ASGO plans and also the room acceptance plan. Those are already done.
Well, it has not been inspected by our consulting engineer. He has not been out to see that this drainage is done and that it is stabilized. It has to be stabilized.
Okay, I differ. We've been out there two to three times with Merrill, so, and we went out there and we had it through a specification, so he has been out there. The only thing left on the detention, the shrubbery, if the shrubbery was good, we would have been done then. And when I go through all these other items, really, most everything is done here.
Our consulting.
But we have no problem believing in the $27,000 because of the shrubbery, but a lot of those other items are completed already.
Our consulting engineer has not gone out to verify that the list is complete right here, that the surety is based on.
Okay.
Comments from the public?
You must all be from deer common. Okay.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
Can I ask who flowers were sipped yesterday? Who's taking care of your flowers?
The homeowners.
Okay, so you may hire somebody to do that.
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the planting plan. Were the Eastern Red Cedars, the juniper's virginiana, that spec on this plan, were they installed, do you know? The ones labeled as RC?
The ones that were originally on the plan were.
This is not, no.
Not put in, they switched out, but we went through the plan with, asked for the change.
And everything was subbed for an Arberite?
The Green Giant, Arberite was subbed in for the, whatever's on that plan.
And, okay, so is that, Karen, does that sound accurate?
And that's what's getting me.
That everything was changed to Arberite? There was no variation in the.
Which one of these is the Arberites?
I believe that they said at the time they couldn't get the Eastern A's of the Arberites.
No, no, there's a letter on.
No, that says white cedar.
There's a letter on record with us asking to switch it out and move it through.
Four.
My, okay, so my only, and could you tell me a little about the soil conditions, or is it, what is this area? I can't really tell from.
On the second detention basin there on the back?
Yeah.
Well, it's manmade, it's, you know, it's.
So it's a fill soil?
You're looking at this, you know, eight feet on the top, down about eight feet.
And this is on the flat top of.
It's a flat top, which we have to cut every year, so, you know, we're trying to cut around them, but, you know, maybe you can talk to the board, some of the homeowners about it, what their feeling is about it, but we did switch them out with the intent that it would work, but it hasn't.
And do you know in the conceptual, in the landscape plan, what the intent of these plantings were? Was it a privacy screening? Or do you know, just conceptually, what was this planting for?
Conceptually, there's some telephone poles behind it that run, I'll say.
So it was to.
Messy, to try to.
Screening.
So it was to afford privacy and like create more of a woodland feel at the back of the.
Mostly, I think, because of the poles.
Okay.
They're high tension wires that go through there.
Yes.
That's what goes through there.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, but we're talking about a distance of 300 feet to the poles, maybe?
So, it was to.
Messy.
Screening.
So, it was to afford privacy and like create more of a woodland feel at the back of the?
Mostly, I think, because of the poles.
Okay.
They're high tension wires that go through there.
Yes.
That's what goes through there.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, but we're talking about a distance of 300 feet to the poles, maybe. Those shrubs are probably at 200 feet.
Right.
Back of that flat area.
Set back.
Yeah, from the cul-de-sac, so 200 feet to the back of the detention basin, maybe another 100 feet to the poles. Which, I don't remember how high the poles are, maybe 20 feet.
Okay.
25 feet. You know, they're not the large, large ones.
It's not high voltage.
I think they would.
Yeah.
Poles.
Probably.
So.
4 KV stuff.
I only bring it up.
A beetle would be fine.
I was just curious if you had, if red cedars were in fact installed because I, that's, I consider that also as a substitution to.
Well, whatever was on the plan originally, they felt was not going to survive. And so, they switched it up with this one.
Right, well.
So, the red cedars were not installed as it's shown on the plan here?
Right.
That's a highly deer tolerant native species that won't require watering or anything. Can live in bone-dry soil after establishment and.
Sure, I mean, because it's man-made, it's on the top, it's definitely dry.
Right, that's.
It's not going to walk.
He was talking about deer tolerance.
I'm saying that's a good tree to put up there and is also quite deer-resistant. I'm just giving you my advice as a future, a follow-up planting. That's all.
All right, anybody else on the board? All right, public. Yes, sir.
I'm Jerry Higgy, 16 Deer Common Drive. The main reason that most of us are here, we thought would be on the equal target. We're not. We're hoping, because we've been told that everything's going well and a lot of things have not been accepted, but they've been done. And we see that they've been done. And it has to be inspected, obviously. And then at that point, we're looking forward to maybe making the fall discussion meeting, being on that topic. That's why we're here. And that's the basis for everyone being here with different items that are listed. McSherry's and Tedeschi's are doing their job. There are things that are done, but Karen hasn't inspected them yet. The only other thing that probably doesn't relate to the board here, but it's just something that has to be said, and I don't know the answer to it. Many of us have been there three years, some two or three years, and, you know, thousands of dollars of taxes. And I was just wondering what the procedure, if there is any, when you talk about snowplowing and sanding, if there ever is a condition, because the street is done, the sidewalks have been done, the streets are done, the hydrants have been done for a while, yet we're still responsible. Another portion of that is the fear of the magnitude of 2015 where you need bulldozers and things like that to get out of the street.
So, I have provided Mr. Higgy with the requirements for street acceptance. I have provided the developer with the requirements for street acceptance. And part of that is a petition where 75% of the people have to sign. No petition has been submitted yet. I discussed this the other day with the town administrator. And Situit doesn't have a policy that if everything's done, then they'll snowplow prior to a vote of town meeting. Situit has no policy like that. So, everything has to be complete and it has to go through a street acceptance and take, get the vote of the street acceptance committee, board of selectmen, and planning board prior to the town plowing. I did do what, I told you I would go and ask again. And I did, I did ask the town administrator that.
Right, and at this point, there's, we don't have any control over the street acceptance process.
That's correct. We have to, we have to, we have to close out the subdivision first from our end. But, I mean, if the residents wanted to, they could file the petition for street acceptance and try to go through the process. And see how much gets done by April. But I can't.
The petition would have to be filed by, the warrant closes when, on the 17th?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So, you have a weekend to get your petition. But that doesn't, you won't get plowed this winter.
It's a petition just the 17th.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five signatures?
That's what starts the process.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, if you would, a formal request.
Okay.
Yes.
No, no, we're going to get on the petition and I don't want you to speak. It was just, the time it's taken for Deer Common to be approved, part of it, lack of urgency.
May I have your name, please?
Karen Nutter, 28 Deer Common.
Thank you.
I feel lack of urgency from the builders to get the road first of all done. How it did have to do with one of the lots is still unwrapped, not complete. And that did delay the road being done. However, I feel it wasn't until we pushed the builders to get it done that they finally get it done. Our concern now is who's going to manage the builders in getting it done for the appropriate time necessary? I understand there's only a few items left, but those items have been on that agenda to be done for months now. And it's been ignored until the past week after we met with Karen. All of a sudden, things are starting to happen. And we don't feel we should be managing it. We're the taxpayers. We're kind of looking for the town to support us in getting this done so we can get on the warrant in April. I understand it's last minute. We didn't know there was a petition to be signed until we received it the other day. And we have half the signatures. We'll finish that. Part of it, with the DPW letter on the front of that, kind of leaves, the way it's stated, it doesn't say it's the builder's responsibility. It states that the Deer Common homeowner's responsible, but understanding the surety bond. So, I didn't want to pass anything in until I understood from the DPW. And I have made a call and then I'll call back from him. So, I think we are looking for assistance from anybody to help us get this done because as some of us have lived here two or three years and literally we have, well, the amount of taxes we pay, nothing, and, you know, we haven't received anything. The snowplowing, for us to pay the amount of taxes we pay, to pay the snowplowing, street cleaning, and everything else necessary on top of our taxes is really a burden that I don't think any of us expected to get, have two or three years later.
Okay.
And regarding the trees in the land, we'd be happy if they would take it out because afterwards, there are responsibilities as the homeowners to pay for any upkeep, et cetera. They don't screen, they're too far apart. It almost is a shame to have them back there because they're so squatty, they don't look healthy. And I'm not sure anything can survive back there, just because, like, the animals look back there. So, removing those totally from the roots up would make us happy, too.
All right, thank you. Karen, how can we expedite this? Or can we? No?
We can't stop them from applying for street acceptance. We can't stop them from applying for that.
Right, okay.
So, if they want to go and apply and get it before the warrant closes on Tuesday, then they can go ahead and do it. I mean, I guess, you know, I'll wait and see what Mr. McSherry drops off at the office and then we'll go from there.
Well, I will be dropping off the aspil plans and the road acceptance plan signed by Ross Engineering. So, those will be done.
When?
I can, they told me I can bring them up tomorrow, so.
But there's still a number of items to close out the subdivision. You need to have the.
And do they need to do that in order to vote for street acceptance?
Well, yeah, I mean, our engineer, our peer review engineer has certified.
So, are these items, are all these items left? Are these the only items left?
No. Those are the items on the subdivision punch list that we have.
Will we go through it? Because I feel that almost everything's done.
Well, there's two things. One is you feel everything's done. One is we have to be assured that it's all done, right?
That's correct.
So, there's.
I understand.
Two steps, right? So, I guess all I'm asking Karen is, is this the, this isn't the, the sort of the surety bond remaining things isn't the comprehensive list? There's another list of things.
Pretty much is. Pretty much is the list of things that need to be done on the subdivision. And Peter Palmer threw in extra money because prior to turning it over, you know, for street acceptance, it all has to be cleaned. And if it has to go through a winter to get it, it's going to need enough.
Right, so.
It's going to need cleaning again. You know, I got to say, the time to debate whether these things are done or not is not right now.
Not now, no. Not now, all right.
Well, hold on, hold on a second. We're asking about what can we do to motivate somebody to finish all these things, right? One thing we can do is not release surety bond, okay?
That's correct.
Right?
That is correct.
So, we could just say, we're going to leave it 131 until this gets done. Right? And that will motivate you to help get this all done.
And we are motivated.
Okay, well.
And when I look at this list, I know there's 67 items here, but I know you're saying not the place to go through it, but I'm telling you that I love the shrubs. And I'm waiting on SLT to do a handicap pad that was really not part of the subdivision plan, but they asked us to do it, so we're going to do it. The swale's done. The hydrants are done. All the aspil plans are done. The sweeping of the road or cleaning of the basin really shouldn't be done until next spring. We already did it once this year and they're in good shape. Like, they've asked us to do it again. Well, we really shouldn't do it till springtime after they sand and clean up the basins just before road acceptance. But other than that, we really have no shrubs hang over it. It, that's the only thing that's not done. We're really, we need direction on that, I guess, so.
Mr. Bjorkland, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. If they're just looking to go on for street acceptance, you can always postpone it once you put it in. So, if this stuff's not done, you can move it to the next town meeting. So, I just recommend you all get it in.
Oh, no, yes. All right, Karen.
One more thing on the swale. The swale, Karen, we did the swale. Ross came out, shot it, put it on the plan. So, that's on the plan, on the final plan. So, if Peter wants to come out and look at it, he can. But Ross already technically drew it up, went out there, shot it, and put it on the plan like he has it. So.
I just have a comment on that. A swale, let's keep in mind that a swale is, it's a lot more than just degrading and having a resurfate in aspil. It's a piece of infrastructure. It's green infrastructure.
No, it was, we had a, on the first lot on the right is, it goes uphill. Some water was weeping out of the hill there. So, they, we drew a, you know, we had like a three to one slope. They asked us just to dig down six inches, move that over to here. So, as the water comes out of the hill, it would drain towards the basin.
Right, so it's, it's a piece of infrastructure in the sense that rather than a hard, no, it is. It's a piece of infrastructure called green infrastructure that conveys stormwater or drainage water from one place to another place. The stormwater basin is where it's going, so it's conveying water. So, it's not only to have to be, have the grades be shot, but it needs to be functioning as designed. And I think that's where Karen is kind of getting at, is that the engineer, our peer reviewing engineers, to say, yes, this piece of infrastructure is functioning as it was designed. It's not just a matter of shooting the grades for the aspils.
But we were asked to.
There's going to be a tie into the catch basin as well.
Right.
Yeah, that's all done.
So, I, this is a first. I'm hearing it's done, so we have to go out and inspect all that.
Do you think that we could get this done by next Thursday, the 19th? Do we have time to bring Mr. McSherry back and Merrill, look at all of this? Get the aspils, get whatever it is that we need to go forward?
Do I personally feel that? No, I don't feel that the requirements have been met under the subdivision control block.
Okay, Ben?
I mean, they can work on them. I mean, but I, you know, things have to be sent by certified mail. We need certificate of compliance signed by the applicant. We need copies of all the requisite number inspections. The aspils, we need that. We need certification from the planning board's engineer. We need certification from the board of health. We need certification from the conservation commission. And we need copies of reference to necessary instruments.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure that that can all, I'm not sure that that can be done in a week.
Okay. Mr. McSherry?
Okay, I hear you, Karen. You telling me that we have to go through conservation, maybe conservation before can go on? You agenda?
I'm telling you that, I'm telling you that in order for the planning board to sign off on the performance guarantee and release that.
Yeah.
You have to have, and we need this information prior to.
No, I'm not disagreeing. So, you're saying all that has to be done by next Thursday?
No, no.
I'm not saying, but all these things have to be done.
We've already done the board of health. Letters have already been written there. We're, we're going into seed conservation. We're going to get our COC on the road. Beyond that, I have all the plans that are signed. Maybe Peter has to go and look at the soil. I wouldn't disagree with that. But we did what we were supposed to do and put it on the plan, shot it, installed it. Really, I only, I, other than technical things, yes. Handicap ramp and shrubs, we don't have anything else to do other than clean the road and spray them and maybe hit the basins again. We shouldn't have ever did that.
Bill, in the, in the street acceptance process, at what point in time will they be looking for a sign-off from the planning board?
They've got to go through a process of, they meet, they come back up, they've got a commitment to go ahead, vote it that they want and they pay for it. And they just look at it and see how does it comply with those. And mainly, they look at the roads and sidewalks.
Are they looking for a planning board sign-off on the completed subdivision?
The planning board actually comes back, does an approval that goes to town meeting to have, and then it's accepted.
Yeah.
So, we get it, we ask engineering to go ahead with it, then it comes back to us and we vote it, then it goes to town meeting.
Okay, so we have, if they start by next Tuesday, we have how much time before it would come back here?
Probably two months.
Two months.
Yeah, I mean, DPW's already been out three years.
You got two months to finish everything on the punch list.
Okay.
Or less. I would say you should do it in a month just because you don't want to be late.
Well, the biggest question is, are the shrubs?
And the biggest question is, is the drainage improvement that was just installed going to take care of the puddle that was in the road? And DPW is going to want to look at that in the springtime and over the wintertime to make sure that the puddle does not exist. Because there was a puddle in the road, that's a potential icing problem. And so, that's why this solution was needed. We can start the process and like Mr. Bjorkland said, if it's not ready, it just gets.
If the engineers say they have to have other confirmation, that's what they say, right? I mean, you get it in the process.
We can start the process.
Maybe we can have Peter go look at it and.
You had your hand up, man?
Well, you've got to get DPW.
All right, in terms of reducing.
Have a friend on street acceptance.
I mean?
Have a friend on street acceptance.
But him. I mean, we're just trying to expedite it for you all. Because this is, sometimes I think you probably feel like you're clutching feathers trying to get all of this. I think we somehow have to figure out, and maybe you might want to meet with the homeowners association and with Karen, you know, if you want to bring in a representative, to figure out the trees that need to go on the back. Because from what I'm hearing, they just assumed deep-sixed those trees and not have anything there.
Yes. And it's also easier for landscaping back there because we have to keep that fully clean. And it makes sense for us not to have the trees there because otherwise, he's got to trim them and work around and.
Right, so maybe that's.
There are hindlets.
It is shown on the approved subdivision plan.
I understand that. But is there any way that we can have a field change here?
That's what the board wants. Then we could, you could run a field change.
Well, I guess we'd want to make.
Would you like to see pictures of it first?
Yes.
Yeah, we'd want to make sure that this was sort of a consensus thing. And I don't know everybody who's here and whether you represent every single homeowner there or not. But, you know, people bought the house with the expectation that this was the land plan, right? So, to the extent that everybody's sort of in agreement with a different approach, and we agree that it was for screening only, then we could make a modification, right? But I wouldn't wanna make a modification based on just some opinions if it's gonna affect the whole, the whole subdivision, so to speak.
Would you like us to put it on the agenda for next week to talk about the planting after we go out and take...
After you consult?
After we go out and take pictures? So that you can see what the area looks like?
Fine, yes, sir.
I just wanted to get signatures for everyone in development about the plant.
Excuse me?
Could we get signatures from everyone in development about the plant?
Yes, yes. You had your hand up again.
Oh, well, no, I was, that's okay. She, no, if you're gonna do it next week, that's fine. And actually, we, Jerry and I are the trustees of the H2A, so we kind of represent everybody. However, Megan and Bill are the ones who see the trees in the back of it. They are the only ones. I mean, I see them out one window and I prefer them out, but they actually have them in the backyard. So, I think they'd be the ones who would speak up more.
It's actually, because it's on the subdivision plan that was approved, if we are going to go with a modification, you all have to agree that this is what you want. Okay? So, pencil them in, what time on the 19th?
We have a public, public hearing, public meeting at 8 o'clock that I expect to last at least a half an hour, if not longer. So, we could just say 8:30 for conservative purposes. That way, if the thing gets out earlier, we can schedule, but there may be a week.
Okay, all right. What about the surety? That's what we're, really we're here for. What are we doing, people?
Can we take this up at the same time next week? I'd like to know, I'd like to know we're all on the same plan to get this done?
Do you postpone the decision to take it out, yes?
So do we need to make a motion to postpone?
Yes.
Move to postpone the surety decision until the 19th at 8:30?
And next week's meeting's at the, um...
Public Safety Center.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.
Yes, sir.
At the Public Safety Center.
The new police fire station, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, um...
Accessory, accessory dwelling.
Does anybody need to take a break?
I wouldn't mind taking a break. I wouldn't mind taking a break.
I entertain a motion to take a five-minute break. All in favor?
Aye.
Consider this to be the final, final take on this particular issue. What I'd like to do is be able to put a placeholder in for this springtown meeting, which I believe has to be done by December 17th. And then work on this with, with Karen, perhaps for then closing loopholes or changing the language that might, might prove not bulletproof. I set out this memorandum, presumably you've read it, which pretty well details the reason I think we need to do something along these lines. I've had many complaint calls about abandoned structures across town. They are a blight to the neighborhood. They are a danger to the neighborhood in several ways. They, right now, if you apply strictly the language of Section 830 and to a degree the language of Section 810.1, after a certain amount of time, three years typically, they're dead properties if they are non-conforming and can't be rehabilitated under our present situation. So that presents the problem, obviously, of blighted properties continuing to exist in these neighborhoods. And also, although this has never been challenged in court, to my knowledge, it seems to me that the regulations could constitute a taking. You know, I've got a property that, well, for example, on Surfside Road, it's been abandoned for, I'm guessing, at least 20 years. I can't remember when it wasn't abandoned, and I lived there quite until about five years ago for a long time, on Surfside. It's still there, it's still trashed. It's, uh, the taxes are being paid by some holding company in California that we finally tracked down, so it can't be taken for tax title. But it has no value essentially. It can't be taken down, or if it is, you can't do anything with, with the lot. So, it becomes essentially valueless. Even if the town were to take it down, if it went into tax title and the town decided to come in and demolish it and clear the site, the town would do that at the town's expense, but would have no way of recovering the cost, because there's no value to that, to that lot. So, that's what I was trying to do here. It's been totally successful with the wording that you see before you. I think it's mostly successful. I know Bimwood Road has generally said this was a good idea. One reason for that is that after I've talked with the people who call and complain, I think the next person they call is Jim's office. So he's heard about all of this just as I have. The idea would be to take the residential use, structures basically out of this situation where they're, where they're not allowed to be rehabilitated after a certain amount of time. Residential is a use that's basically allowed in any district. And the sort of problem children, that people seem to complain about most are residential in nature. So this would allow a period of time between the damage or destruction and applying for a building permit or if need be, a special permit from the, from the ZBA to not be, to not be limited. You know, these properties could be, could be repaired, restored, rebuilt at any time, basically. That would, I believe, allow them to retain value and, and become attractive for someone who wanted to come in and either repair the existing property or take it down and build a new structure on that, on that lot. Most of those properties are now on lots that would not be, be conforming. So it's not a question of use, it's a question of dimensional nonconformity. And that's what's kind of stopping this process from, from happening. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or to, you know, go through this in more detail. But as I said, I'd like, I'd like to have the board's general concurrence that this is a worthwhile endeavor. And the ability to get, get our marker in for the springtown meeting and then work further on the language, which I think basically does what I wanted to do. My, my concern is that it could perhaps be, and I don't know how, how at this very moment, but it could be, perhaps be more bulletproof and avoid unintended consequences, which is something you, you think about anytime you change a bylaw or any regulation like this. So, that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Could I ask just a couple of questions about, so you, you indicated you get the complaints, right? And so, what are the nature of the complaints? Is it, is it a complaint after a facility's been damaged and somebody's saying, "When is somebody gonna do something about it?" Or is it a complaint that this has been sitting here for 10 years and nobody's done anything about it?
Yeah, typically a ladder.
So it's been sitting for a long time?
Right.
Right, okay. And just how many properties in town are in that boat?
You know, that's a really good question. I know of three. And I'll bet that, you know, any kind of investigation would turn up more. But the three that I know of are Holly Road, Surfside Road, and Pleasant Street.
And all the, all the houses were damaged from storms or something?
No, Surfside was a storm-damaged situation. Holly was a fire about 20, 20 somewhat years ago. Big Pleasant is the newer case, it just abandoned and developed, it's just kind of falling down.
Somebody moved out and just left it, but nobody maintained it?
At some point, yes, right.
What else are you talking about on Surfside?
About 81?
On the water, the one that's boarded up?
On the water, yeah.
That's been boarded up that long?
Yeah.
Closer, closer to Egypt then?
Uh, correct, closer to Egypt, down, down the far end of Surfside.
And that, the nature of going the current three years, after that point in time, the current situation is, it had, if it's rebuilt, it has to conform with existing zoning?
Well, except for the fact that if it's on, and this is, I won't, I won't say typical, but this happens. If it's on a lot that doesn't meet dimensional requirements...
Now, I get that, but, but the idea would be after three years, they could still rebuild there. They just have to meet all the current zoning requirements. And if they couldn't, then that's a problem.
If they couldn't meet those zoning requirements, yes.
Right. So, what you're suggesting is that they could, they could still rebuild with the current nonconformance, making the current nonconformance no worse?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. And that's a slight change in wording. Existing bylaw talks about less nonconforming. I mean, if you wanted to rebuild something using the existing foundation, which makes perfect sense, and that foundation didn't conform to setbacks, you should be able to do that. So I'm saying it should be not more nonconforming.
So somebody shouldn't be able to sort of pour an extension to that foundation and build a slightly bigger house or whatever?
Not without going before the ZBA.
Right.
You know, all of those regulations, which really aren't part of this section, would still be in place.
And I don't mean to monopolize the conversation, if you guys have other questions?
So, so this is basically saying that they can rebuild it? Get rid of the three years and say that they can...
Yeah, right, right.
So rebuild at any time?
Yes.
What's gonna mot...
So I guess the flip side of that is, why rebuild, 'cause they can do it at any time?
Well, that is the flip side, and you know, that's ironically why this was, regulation was put in place in the first place.
But that didn't, but that didn't work either.
It hasn't, it's, you know, in, in certain instances, it's had consequences diametrically opposed to what it was supposed to affect.
How many instances has it actually proved out?
I, really no way of assessing that, Steve.
That's what I'd be worried about, is just, you know, people then just delaying, 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 right? Is there a way to structure it in a way that you allow people to rebuild, but there's an incentive to rebuild early?
I don't know, I mean, I would...
'Cause I would think if I lived next to it, that would be my motivation, right? Is, you know, can you, can you fix this thing up soon, not 15 years from now, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to have it both ways.
Yeah, I know, and I, well, that's kind of how this thing is written right now. We, we, we don't have it both ways now.
No, no, you're incentivizing the people, you're incentivizing people, as I said in the memo, to, you know, to bring their property back into good condition sooner rather than later. But it's a pretty draconian incentive in the sense that it's all or nothing. And again, I think you're gonna be in a situation, if anybody goes to court on this, the town's gonna be accused of a, an uncompensated taking.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, do we know that all of these houses are abandoned and not just derelict?
Well, abandoned is, again, a word that, you know, doesn't, doesn't really capture the nuances, let's put it that way.
Well, let me put it this way, do we know that people are not living here?
Yes, in the three cases that I've, that I've given you, yes, for sure of that. However, taxes are being paid.
On all of them?
All three of them, they're being paid?
I believe so, yeah.
So do you, you, you feel like, if, let's just say, you said, okay, starting 2020, anybody whose house fell under this, and you have 10, 10, five more years to build the house, you know, we'll, we'll go back? We'll, we'll take that stay away and now you can rebuild them, we'll give you five years?
You mean retroactively apply it to the existing...
Yeah, like saying, okay, because basically, if you put this wording in, right?
Yeah.
You're taking away that three years.
Right.
So now they can build.
Right.
But again, they can, so what if you, I mean, I don't know that this is the right thing. You gave it, you gave it an ending...
I think I understand what you mean. You tell all of these people who right now are...
They're not gonna build, because there's no incentive to build, because they can't build.
Because they can't build, and you're saying, okay, we're gonna give you an exception for five years, so...
Whatever, for a certain amount of years, and you can rebuild.
Possible.
So what you're saying is...
And we're sure with these three that you've identified, they can't be rebuilt and conform?
Uh, yeah.
So in other words, if somebody decided that they wanted, and they made an offer to the property owner who's still paying taxes to purchase this derelict piece of property, they're not allowed to build, rebuild it?
Correct. And we've had several people, particularly on the Holly Road property, query the office, you know, can I, can I rebuild if I buy this property? What can I do with it? You know, there are people who are interested, specifically in that, in that situation.
And sometimes I think they take the money and run.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This property or situation comes to mind.
Yeah.
Is there a way to deal with it that deals with it more like Rebecca was suggesting? That's like a, a derelict property provision or something? You know, that it's, it's sat fallow for three years and, you know, there's a special permit or something you can get to be allowed to rebuild in sort of nonconforming condition or whatever it is?
Yeah, I, I think so, yes, you know.
That would make a little bit more sense.
I hadn't thought of that, but maybe that's the way to go.
But it has to be an existing derelict. It can't just be a vacant lot
Right.
that once upon a time...
No, you have to go through the same process, which is you have three years to rebuild it, and maybe there's a timeframe after that that if it lags for another two years, it becomes effectively a derelict property or something?
Sometimes I think these properties end up in, in an estate probate that could...
All, all, all kinds of reasons, that there's, you know, years and years passed that nothing can be done. Divorce, death or illness, somebody in a nursing home, an estate probate.
But once it gets out of probate, as long as it's sort of, you know, gone through the process, right? And it's been categorized sort of derelict, I don't know what we'll call it, and it's, it's fairly draconian name, but... But once it gets categorized that, whoever were to purchase it out of probate would have the ability to go to this special clause to rebuild it, sort of?
Well, yes, you would hope that the, the, that allowance and the language that a lot...
Just do it as a special permit?
Would, would make it economically attractive for somebody to pursue that property and rebuild it. I mean, that, that's the incentive, I'm gonna make somebody...
So you're, I'm sorry, you're saying, what you brought up is if you did the special permit, someone new could buy the property and use the special permit as opposed to this, which had to be the owners owned it?
No, I'm not saying that's...
That could be anybody.
Could be anybody.
Anybody who owned it, if, if you tripped the five-year period, right? Or something like that, right?
And buy it knowing that I could rebuild or, you know, or redevelop.
Or the owner could do that, too.
Or the owner could do that, but the, the point is the property didn't have value.
Right, but the owner could only do it if they, if they sat on their rights for three years. They could only do it if they came back and got a permit to do it. Right, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying, is leave that three-year period in there to like motivate people to just get it done. And I realize that things come up, people don't get things done in three years. But if you give them sort of an out provision to do that...
So that after three years, I could do it, but I'll leave the special permit?
Right.
Yep.
But, but it, it leaves that sort of three-year maybe incentive to say, "I can do it just as right, I can do it," you know, whatever. Just file a building permit and get it done. Otherwise, I've gotta go through this other process. I don't lose the value, but I have to go through this other process.
Yeah, I, I could see that. The only thing that you would worry about, let's just say you were a potential buyer for a property that falls into this category, you would want that special permit in place before you actually block the property.
So you, you could do that, you could, you know, they do that all the time
Yeah.
in rebuilding, like condos, you could, you know...
So somebody could permit it?
The buyer, you know, I've got one, a 16-month... The sixteen month, they're not gonna buy it until-
Until all, all the permits are in place, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you're not gonna buy, even, no one's gonna buy it.
It makes the process a little more stretched out and a little chancier for the potential buyer, but, I, I realize that, that it's all about.
Yeah, they, they, so they could do that.
I, I have the feeling we're not trying to address the ones where somebody's house burned down or whatever, and they get it rebuilt, right, and they're gonna jump on it and sort of-
Of course, yeah.
It's gonna take them a couple of years, but they'll get it rebuilt, and that's what you want most people to do, right?
And most people would want that.
Right.
You know, it's the cases that you try to, try to address the cases.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking if you could create it, sort of an exception path for it, maybe that's, maybe that's a better-
I like that idea, too, because I just, you, you know, it's the other houses, that someone's gonna figure out how to use this.
Well, that's, that's why I'd like to have a chance to decide-
This is all those other people.
Make it as bulletproof as possible.
Right.
Uh, you know, I, I'll tell you that right now, it doesn't work.
Right.
So, we need to change it one way or another.
But, it's also not, it's not fifty properties or anything, it's, it's a handful of properties, right, so, so from an exception point of view, it seems like it wouldn't create much in the way of additional process on an annual basis to sort of deal with them, if you needed to, right?
Yeah. Steven?
I was just gonna say, you were right, you talked about something, has a fire, like the one on Holly Road.
Hmm?
The woman has physical issues, and when she actually received some insurance money, I think she actually used that to live on, and I think the same thing could have happened in your situation, the money was needed for other things, but it wasn't a priority at the time, and they get stuck because they didn't file for those permits, and there's absolutely no avenue after that for somebody to come back and try and get the property.
Yeah, it just seems like if we create the avenue, then, then you have, you know, you don't lose the value of the property, no matter, somebody, somebody buys it, they can find a way to value it.
And that's all having to do with-
Oh, yeah.
Are, are the taxes for it now, is it based on the, the old value, or is, have the tax base drops, I mean, it's just an empty lot, or sort of, it's like-
I don't know, like-
Can't be very highly assessed, right?
Yeah, I, I did not research that.
But, you know, the other unfortunate part, there are houses in town that are occupied that look like they did it and left.
Yes.
I mean, they are absolutely sifting down around people's ears, they are so bad.
That's, that's a different issue.
I know.
There's a lot you can do about that.
No, it's unfortunate.
I mean, you know, the Board of Health can do something about it, if it's unhealthy or something, but, um-
Well, then, I think what we need to do is, we'll put in a stakeholder for this.
We've already, Brad has already sent an email and asked for three placeholders for the town in the minimum for this, for this.
Now, let's see if we can figure out the right language to plug it in here.
We'll massage the wording, see what we can come up with that is bulletproof.
Go as far as possible.
Nothing's perfect in this.
Bob, I, I noticed you struck out the, the term, um, you know, structures, uh, or use damaged or destroyed by accidental cause, and you struck out the, by accidental cause.
Right.
Was that on purpose, or?
It was on purpose in the sense that I don't wanna have to go and kind of parse the, the, the meaning of the word accidental. Um, my house burns down, it could have been an accident, and it also could have been arson, which was not an accident.
Right.
Um, some, somebody blew up a house in Sand Hills a few years ago.
Yep, they did.
Intentional, that was not an accident.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just think that's too narrow, and to have that word down in there doesn't really-
Yeah, I agree, that was quite an experience.
I'm sure it was.
All right, so-
So, yeah, I'm just following that logic, and I'm saying, why should we then incentivize somebody who's gonna blow up their own house?
Well, that wasn't, that was a ten, that was a ten.
I don't wanna incentivize that, but I wanna incentivize it getting repaired when it was a crazy, it was a crazy-
Oh, okay.
It was a suicide. It wasn't even that person's house.
So, it's not, not-
He's not gonna rebuild it.
No, he's not, no, no. He went to- But unfortunately, the person who owned the house now is left with a mess, a mess.
Yeah. No, I understand that somebody else may have caused damage, and in that way, it's sort of accidental, you know, damage to the, to the owner of the house, right?
Right.
I'm, I'm thinking the owner of the house torches his house, we shouldn't, you know, give him incentives to rebuild it.
Well, he'll be in jail.
Yeah, let's, let's hope there are other disincentives besides what people do.
All right, we're getting a little carried away in a little way.
Yeah, I also want, well, just to continue that for just a moment, I'd like to make this also, um, apply to derelict houses that have just kind of fallen down, because the people have left them for whatever reason and walked away, so it's not accidental damage or destruction.
So, what would that be, would, would that be defined by tax delinquency?
I, I don't, it's a good question, you know, I, I-
Because otherwise, if somebody's paying the taxes, then, you know-
Right, right, but, one of the definitions that occurred to me that's in here is that if it's gone to a point where it's no longer fit for habitation, you know, if you can't live in it, then it falls into this category.
So, that house that was down on the Driftway for a few years, that would have fallen into that category?
I would, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, we'll work on it, Bob.
Good, all right, great, thank you.
It will be a collective, um, meeting of the minds, Bill, do you have anything you wanna add to this?
Well, I'd like to see is it a matrix, excuse me, where I am and what I can do.
Okay.
I can follow that a lot easier than I can saying I've got a separate payout.
All right.
Maybe it'd be easier, easier to make it bulletproof, more bulletproof.
Yep. Fine.
I think you can, I think you can be pretty clear about it, it seems like it could be pretty clear, if you define the timeframes and what happens each time, right?
Bulletproof, well, is this bulletproof? Okay, all right.
Thank you all very much, again, I apologize for unintended, uh, English.
That's all right.
Well, we're all hoping you're not still underwater.
No, no, we're just gonna, part of the summer that's gonna drift towards us, probably all gone now.
And it perks, right? Put a swale down there.
Yeah, where you're going.
Okay, we now have a four May at one fifteen Grove Street and five seventy-seven Rio First Parish Road. Cam, what's your story?
An applicant, ours, engineer, are not, are not coming tonight, um, this plan, um, it shows a division of land, and every lot has frontage and access on, uh, First Parish Road or Grove Street, um, so it's, it's, the plan should be endorsed. I provided you with the proof that the, uh, that the five seventy-seven R was, uh, legal with frontage, because it was, uh, with, uh, variance back in the, uh, back in the day.
Back in the day.
Why are they not here?
Uh, Mr. Morris is not able to-
They don't care that much?
Mr. Morris was not able to attend, um, with agent, is Morris Engineering, if you have any questions and you are willing to accept Mr. Bjorkland as, um, an advocate for Mr. Holmes, who's in the hospital, then you can ask Mr. Bjorkland some questions.
Is that why you're here today? Oh, okay. I'm glad to see somebody.
I was just hanging out, you know.
Glad to see somebody cares.
All right, why don't you come forward, Steven?
So, if you're willing to accept him, I don't have any piece of paper from Mr. Holmes saying he's, Mr. Bjorkland can talk for him.
Do I need to accept him?
But, I mean, so, I'm just, I'm just telling you how it is, I, I believe you need to endorse the plan because it is access and frontage, so, I mean-
I mean, the plan stands by itself.
Right.
Nothing against Steven, but-
I think the plan, I think the plan stands by itself.
All right, then.
So, what, could I ask, why, why are they doing this?
They wanna put in a comment.
Henry's a past general hospital, so he's, can't really talk because he's being dripped with morphine right now, he had a major operation.
Yeah, so I'm just asking a question, you know why they're doing this?
Because they're, next week, you're going-
I was creating an X law.
What?
So, creating an X law. So, what's happening is, as you look at the plan, uh, right now, Henry owns Lot One and Lot Two, and they're in a different configuration on the assessors map, it's actually squared off, so what he's doing is he's re-dividing these two lots, he's leaving Lot One with forty thousand square feet of outland-
Mm-hmm.
And he's going to purchase from Mr. Minutian Parcel A, right here, which will give Lot Two forty thousand square feet of outland.
And then that's what the common driveways was-
We have the weapon regulation, so you could use weapons as part of the lots, and now that's changed, because it was done decades ago, so now, in order to make that lot conform, uh, he's gonna add Parcel A to it.
And so Parcel Three was already there, and it's just staying?
Yes.
And Parcel Three is not- That little chunk's coming out of Parcel Three.
Parcel Three is not being reduced to a point where it makes it non-conforming, which could be the other question that you may have, but, it has, I think, like five acres of land or something like that, so they're only giving a small portion, and, and this will be back in front of you for Common Drive Way, and I think we're already on for a senior hearing at the next meeting, so there'll be some more development going on for these two particular lots.
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty much it.
All right. Any comments?
I'm introducing to us as a program, not required to plant land in Cituate, last showing a division of assessors boxes, thirty-six dash two dash two, thirty-six dash two dash five R, and thirty-six dash two dash four R, one fifteen Grove Street and five seventy-seven R, First Parish Road, forty-four, prepared by, what?
Take that out.
Take that out, that doesn't, um, prepared by Morris Engineering Company, Inc., for
applicant Henry Holmes and property owner Carl A. Munig-
Minutian.
Minutian, dated eleven fifteen nineteen, as the division of land shown in the company plan is not a sub, a subdivision, because it shows every lot on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required under the Cituate zoning bylaw on the public way of Grove Street and/or First Parish Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, alligator?
Hi.
John, good night, Steven.
All right, so we're gonna finish up with a couple of other things on the agenda, which has already, my, 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 disappeared.
Before we go to that, this historic preservation policy that we were talking about, do we wanna take that up next time? Do you want, like, comments on this?
Yeah, I'd like some comments, I mean, we didn't schedule a time, I was gonna call Doug Smith to see when we could, could win, I mean, if I-
All right. Um, I'll send you-
Send me your comments.
I'll send you my thoughts on it, and then everybody else can, too, but-
I was thinking I would not schedule Doug Smith next week.
And now?
I think we have enough already for next week, so I think I'll try to schedule Doug Smith later on.
Okay, um, lays on reports, does anybody have anything?
Um, we had the third public workshop for the master plan this week, it was fairly well-attended, um, and I think we got some, some good information, but coming down the pike is gonna be the, I think, the fourth and final, unless we deem it necessary to have more public, um, meetings, and, uh, I think we should really try to make a big push to get everyone out of that, it's gonna be later on in January.
Do we have a date?
I think it's, January twenty-eighth.
Twenty, uh, sounds right.
January twenty eighth.
Twenty-eighth, and what time is it, you know?
I'm not sure yet, I don't know if the time, our location's been figured out.
I'm not sure it has been.
Yeah. Um, and what else, um, so, yeah, we're making good progress with master plan updating, and then, uh, only other thing I really have to report at this time is that there's a, the, the selectmen have approved the aqua, shellfish aquaculture rules and regulations, uh, all that does is establish a set of rules and regulations for aquaculture operations in the town of Cituate, doesn't mean anyone's getting any permits at this time, but that's gonna be the next steps, is figuring out how issuing shellfish grants is gonna work, and how the pilot program will kind of kick off, um, and, uh, Water Resource Committee hasn't met yet since I last updated you, but I do know DPW is having the big water meat, water analysis update meeting next week on the eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
So, that might be a good one for us to check up on.
I'll be there, there's a lot of nuts tomorrow, so.
Well, there you go.
Um, but we didn't get any advance information on it.
Nothing. Nothing. Okay, um, CPC met the other night, and we are, Penny Pipers is looking into getting some, not updates, but evaluation of the houses and the property for the Mordecai Lincoln Homestead on Mordecai Lincoln Road, which, um, it's almost five acres of land, it's absolutely stunning, the only issue is who is going to be responsible, when all is said and done, to maintain it, run it, there's two houses on it, and so on, so that's a bit of a conundrum. Um, the skate park was in, it's, uh, inline skating park, it's twenty-five years old, CPC is going to fund that, they are going to, because the big issue going forward is maintenance, who is going to be responsible for maintaining these different projects that people want? So, what's going to happen here, um, the Friends of Cituate Recreation, who fundraise, will put aside ten thousand dollars, which will be put into a fund for the maintenance of the inline skating park, and as they continue to fundraise, they will put more money into it as time goes by to, um, keep it up to date, so there will be a maintenance fund.
And do they, they sign an agreement or something?
They will, it hasn't come to pass yet, it has to go before town meeting and so on.
I know when we first started, we were sort of down the process of, uh, land acquisition, we started requiring a, a maintenance and management plan for every acquisition, so that, you know, we didn't end up buying a piece of land, and nobody thought about how you're gonna-
How you're gonna deal with it.
Even the most simple things, that's conservation land, have some maintenance-
Right.
-and management requirements.
So, that's, um, there were a couple of other things, there was, somebody wants to, uh, rehab an old nineteen twenty-eight or twenty-nine fire station, fire truck?
Fire truck.
Fire truck for hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, but then who'd own, huh?
How does that become a CPC then?
Well, because it's historical, they claim, but nobody knows who really is going to own it, where it's going to live, who's going to maintain it, so-
Yeah, I thought it lived on a, above a road.
Well, maybe it does, and maybe it won't, I don't know, and, so that's basically all we did with that. Do you have anything?
No, except that, uh, I think zoning's gonna start to get a little wishy-washy about that forty week, we just spent a lot of complaints, I mean, it was right up to three, they put a skate up there last week, and so-
How could they build on that?
I don't know, I don't either. Yeah, we have to say he's gotta do it, or he did.
Bill, do you have anything?
I do have one thing.
Yes.
Which isn't, I don't know, maybe you guys already know this, that the sewer department wants to start requiring, you're already shaking your head.
I know about this.
I know what it is, Joe.
No, we're gonna discuss it.
What is it?
So, they wanna just start to require, I guess, people that are selling their property to have their pipe that comes out of their house-
The lateral.
-out to the road, the lateral, to make sure it's in good shape and not cracked, because there was a couple of houses sold in Cituate where those pipes are cracked, there was a couple of houses sold in Cituate where those pipes are cracked, nobody knew about it, except backed up a few of those houses that they just purchased.
These are pipes that are connected to the sewer system?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. It seems pretty reasonable.
It does seem reasonable, but...
Right, you would think a home inspector inspection would want to address that.
That is not, not normally happens in a home inspector.
A little more technical.
But it should, and it has been on the books since 1990.
So, I just think that, you know, they had gone on to a lot of realtors to tell them this, but you can have people from other towns selling property in Cituate, and how are you going to let people know?
Well, it's...
But it's a requirement, you know what I mean?
But here's the thing.
That was the question.
When you have to do whatever it is at the end, you have to, just as you need a Title V.
Right, I know, but that is, that's a, that's a law. You know what I mean?
Right.
He did say there was something on the books, I think.
Yes, there is.
Well, you don't need a Title V for sewer connection, though.
No, you don't, but you should need something because that's part of the problem.
It's just making sure that people know. Like, I don't think, I don't have a problem with it, but it's, how do you let everybody know that this is...
How do you educate the populace? That this, I had one realtor, oh, I don't think that's fair, you know, the town didn't maintain it. It's not about the town maintaining the pipe that goes from your house to the horseman.
And the other thing is, if you're a realtor and that's a buyer, you don't want that, your buyer to buy that house, that house that's got the broken pipe, because...
Then somebody better fix that broken pipe.
Right.
Somebody has, and that, it depends maybe, but someone was saying it was not, not, it's not like buying a, getting a new septic system.
No, it's not, it's not anywhere near buying a new septic system.
Depends on what went wrong, or what the complexity of the excavation is.
You got to dig it up, basically.
But it actually doesn't apply to people on the White House.
Why?
Because, because...
And that's who it should apply to.
Well, because when they redo whatever they're doing, those pumps, those pipes are all going to be changed out. It's part of that whole deal.
Right.
But, so rest is... It makes it just a little more tricky of who is it applied to and who doesn't. But, you know, if you...
Well, it should apply, you know, it should apply to anybody selling a house, right? Because even those people, after they got new pipes, if they sell it a year from there...
Right. It's hard for people to know, selling houses, if it's something that only happens in lockdown. It's hard to make sure that gets, so we just got to figure out a way to get it, so people know.
Yeah, holds up a couple sales, people start to remember.
Yeah, they do. And I understand those particular sales, the homeowners came back and the previous owners, and replaced the pipes. But if you have to put in a new septic system, that can be 30 to 18,000 dollars as opposed to two to five. But that's, but that's a, I mean, you can't close, well, unless it's...
Put an escrow.
Yeah, yeah. You can put it in escrow. If you're getting a mortgage, you will not close, they will not give you a mortgage without that.
Because of state law.
Interesting, interesting situation. Karen?
All right, so we have a lot going on this week. There's, we're having an in-house meeting with the Drew Company. They're coming in with their contractor and their architect, and we're meeting them, and we're, they're going to meet some of the department heads and kind of discuss some scheduling and stuff, and all the requirements that need to be done prior to them starting construction, which they are still hoping will be this spring. So, that's a nice positive thing. We did put in three placeholders for town meetings, so we are working, you know, with Bob, we're working on North Cituate, and we're working on signs. So, we're working on three fronts there.
Working on, what are we doing on North Cituate? When you say we're working on North Cituate?
Zoning update.
Zoning update. Basically...
What we did in Green Bush.
What we did in Green Bush.
Oh, there's a big, there's a big rewrite on it?
We've had, MAPC has been working on it, and there's been, they've been working with working groups, and there was public, they've had a couple of public meetings, so it's, yep, it's been working on.
Step one, sewers?
Right, but you need the zoning in place prior to the sewer, you know, so 50 country way, I'm still waiting for, I'm still waiting for the shutters and balcony supports to be done, and a walkthrough on the site punch list. I submitted the letter to the state to try to get the four units on subsidized housing inventory. I sent Mr. Hallen an email.
I was told that those, by the way, those apartments are renting, like, fully rented, and they're renting for fairly good prices, too. At 50 Country Way?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think they are.
Yeah. Boston-style rents.
Mr. Hallen didn't do his garage doors yet. You guys gave him till December 1st. I sent him an email, I reminded him he was supposed to do it, and I haven't heard back from him. So, what, how long do you want me to give him? What do you want me to...
What, what leverage do we have? Any?
Except we can start finding him. I've asked him for his schedule and, you know, et cetera. You can haul him back in here again. He has occupancy of his building, but...
Has he, do we know if he has occupied the space above the new garage? Because that was all set and ready to go.
He doesn't have any accessory, but only special permit.
That doesn't matter.
I understand that doesn't matter. I...
There were only so many fish we could fry.
But you can think about that, and if you have any suggestions, you can get back to me. Seaside at Cituate, they anticipate the first occupancy permits at the end of January. A meeting out there next week with a bunch of town departments, and we're kind of going to try to go through things that are needed prior to first occupancy permits. I've been told the master deed is going to be recorded before the end of the, before the end of the year. They're going to be doing a small change in, for some of the walkways, instead of doing concrete paving, they're going to go with permeable pavers. And ZBA next week is meeting on, has a proposal before it for three 50-foot frontage lots on Laurelwood Drive, and I'm working with Ann and Bill and Rebecca, and we're trying to come up with a letter for the ZBA.
So, I'm sorry, where's this Laurelwood Drive?
Way out on the west end, it's practically in Norwell. It is actually.
Is it off of what?
It's off of First Parish Road.
First Parish, yeah.
The first 750 feet, plus or minus, are in Cituate, then the road, the rest of the road is in Norwell.
Oh, that one, we saw that before, right?
And the rest of, the road in Norwell's been accepted.
Mm-hmm.
Part in Cituate's, technically, we're still holding surety, you know? We are still holding surety. So, it, we're, we've...
So, why do they need the ZBA?
They're going for three 50-foot frontage lots. And then they're going to be coming to, the person at the planning board, for probably to endorse the Form A and to do a common driveway.
Would you consider building on the frontage out there?
Yes.
Curiouser and curiouser.
So, we are working on a letter to get it to the ZBA because we, the planning board have some concerns about this proposal.
Is this a, I'm completely blanking on this, so I must not have been here when it came in?
Nope.
So, this goes back to 98, the subdivision?
I do, well, I definitely was here then.
I was here then.
You don't remember that?
And, you know, it's, it's had some ups and downs over the years, shall we say?
Uh-huh.
And this is the one where the reach and apply lawsuit was filed. I don't know the status of that at the moment, because they weren't paying their consultants at the time, and so it's just one big, one big hole, and it remains unfinished with the town of Cituate. I mean, technically, maybe the pavement's all there, but no one ever has come in. The detention basin, the upper detention basin is on Cituate property, and that hasn't paid taxes in years, so that's...
I mean, but that's technically owned by someone else.
But that's on, that's on Pam's list, you know, treasurer collector is...
She can just foreclose on them, right?
I think she's put a lien on it. But, so, it's got multiple issues that we're trying to, at least, write a letter to the ZBA saying that maybe they need to look at a few things prior to just go ahead and granting, you know?
Maybe they should have some things resolved before...
50-foot frontage, special permits.
I don't think they should take it up at all.
Technically, the land was not part of the subdivision, except the people who are asking for the 50-foot frontage lot did own some land. They were technically signing off as owners of the subdivision, and then, you know, some land was traded, et cetera, you know, sold and resold so that they could get the road. But technically, they were not part of the subdivision.
So, it's individuals asking for these 50-foot lots, not the subdivision then?
No, it's, it's not, it's not the homeowners association, not the subdivision, it's in a butter.
Mm-hmm. And so, there, is there any reason they can't ask for it?
Well...
I'm just, I'm trying to differentiate the subdivision versus this 50-foot lot request. It's not by the subdivision.
The 50-foot lot is not by the, it's by the sub-butter.
Yeah.
It's by the abutter.
Right.
There's questions whether technically, since the road isn't accepted, there's sort of an easement there, maybe the easement's not...
Oh, is it 50-foot on the road?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, it might not actually be town road.
If I drain properly, I mean, there's a number of issues that we're looking into to raise with the, to raise to the ZBA, to ask them to look before they just give three 50-foot frontage lots away.
It's not a town road now then, right?
The department of Cituate is not a town road.
Right. So, they can't, they wouldn't have even 50-foot of frontage on a non-town road, doesn't count, does it? If it's not, if it's a private way, it's not a town road, then they wouldn't have frontage.
Well, they, they theoretically have an easement.
Theoretically.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
It's very interesting.
Okay, so that's pretty much, that's where we are.
Anything else, people? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Shall move. Second.
All in favor? All right, we're done. Thank you.